It's six o'clock, let's call the board. My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Christ, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business under Brett McEasor.
Thank you. Good evening. Every month we try to recognize certain members of the staff and community for what they do for our North Brookfield school community. And this year, this month was no different. I'd like to start by recognizing a gentleman who for 15 years has led what is called Christmas in North Brookfield. This is a free event that we hold at the elementary school every year. It's free admittance, it's free raffle prizes, there's free food, there's free crafts, and our student council works alongside this committee to make sure this happens every year. So for the past 15 years on the leash of Tabby La Lake, we've had this event. It's a fantastic community event that I hope that will last for a long time to come. So I just want to recognize Tabby for all his efforts. This year we had Mr. Bills, our music teacher. We had both of those families who made it play some holiday music for our family. So that was a new addition to the afternoon. So thank you again Tabby, appreciate all you do, you're in the family, so thank you again. But I'd also like to give a shout out to Trish Tarantino, who last Thursday organized and held our Coco Cups. This is another yearly event that we hold here at the elementary school. I believe we had police officers from 14 different communities attend. We had District Attorney Joe Early attend. And this is another way that we invite people in to work with our students. In this case, it was law enforcement, so that our students and families see the value of law enforcement in this community. So these cops, these police officers, and state troopers worked with our students. They built-
Snow globes.
Snow globes. Thank you. They look like gingerbread homes, really. They're snow globes. So a lot of their pictures, I know we should be posting on Facebook over the weekend. So another great event for our students. So thank you to Trish. She didn't want to be here tonight, but I did want to hear a shout out. So thank you Trish for that. And that's it for our shout outs tonight.
So before Tabby runs up the board, if anyone wants to run, Tabby has done a tremendous amount of things for this district and for this town. And so to, and I know we're not trying to, but I feel that to this one event is not appropriate, only because of the amount of time that Tabby and his family have spent supporting this school district and this town. And so Tabby, from my heart to you and to your family, thank you very much.
The Christmas thing, we couldn't vote on the Stu Cup. I mean, every year it's Jake and Olivia that step up to lead it. You know, it was Saturday with Rich Rigg, me 15 years ago, now Caitlin. It's just, all I do is kind of, and my fear is that one day they're gonna say, hey, we don't need you anymore, because they've taken home so much of it. This year from making the hot chocolate to cleaning up after. It's just amazing what these kids do. And I saw Jake's mother yesterday, and Jake came home happy because of what happened and people won different things. And for a teenager, the same thing with Olivia, to see the Christmas spirit in their faces. Another little girl, she told Kylie she was so happy, it was the best party she ever been to, because she won a football. But she lost her football this summer, somewhere on the beach, and she could go back out and play football with her brother again. So those are the kind of things over 15 years, it's been amazing. And we even did it the year of COVID, which was amazing, because I said, nobody's gonna show up. And all of a sudden it looked like Field of Dreams, guys coming into the pocket. This year it was over 75. So I'm going to give it up.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, but, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next testimony and presentation association school superintendent, sort of academic excellence.
All right. So every year, superintendents across the Commonwealth will recognize one to two students based on the size of the district who are academic excellence. This young man, I'm going to present this award to, you've heard his name on multiple occasions to this committee, he's presented. He will be honored this March and will cross with students from across the Commonwealth for their excellence. But truly an outstanding student, but also an outstanding student leader. This year's award goes to Jake Standrowicz.
The ceremony and adjutant's input minutes. And motion to approve minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Do second. Second. Is there any conversation or questions, discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Biological?
Here?
I'm saying, why don't I want to, do this matter here? Any discussion on-
When you ask me that, I'm thinking, isn't he here for the last, I think so.
Sorry. Public participation. There's no public here. Communications.
There was an email from Mr. Grant, the committee inquiry about our upcoming sixth grade rotation meeting, which we sent out that flyer, we ended last week, it's January 23rd, I believe. Mr. Grant, you were on that email as well.
Yep. So I believe there were two others, and I'm aware of there was one asking for a public records information with regard to the new student basketball uniforms. Where are we with that? Have we responded, I guess, as well?
Not officially, because the inquiry, the way the question was raised, is not an accurate record request. The question was why. So I had a fashion response to that person, that's what I meant.
Can you clarify what that was about?
It was around the purchase of the girls' basketball uniforms.
Right, so apparently there are new, and I don't know this, and I apologize if I should, there are new basketball uniforms for the ladies?
Correct.
Okay. And so the question I understood from the email that was sent was, how and why were they purchased? And so maybe the question was simply why, but I think that the question was how and why. From what budget line would they purchase, and for what purpose would they purchase, since the uniforms, according to the email, that they were replacing were fairly new? So, do we, are we-
I don't think they're as new as that person indicated.
Okay.
My research, it looks like they're from 2016, 2017, which, that's five, six years, so.
Okay, so we'll get a response out to that individual in the next, so they will use that stuff, right?
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Okay. And then there was an email that came out today about capital expenditure.
Yes, yes. So I just received that from the time court this afternoon, started highlighting where we're at with certain projects. I don't know when that, that information, stretching this page, it was part of the coming to the district. So some of those items on there, I'm not fully aware of. And also, some quotes are not accurate as of right now. For example, the playground quote is, it's changed to an apple. We have a quote here under playground conditions. So I'm going through it, started highlighting, and talked to the building principals, and finalized that, and also went back to the time court.
Okay, this committee might be able to help you answer.
Yeah, I can share, I can share. You have-
No, I do. I'm just saying, some of the things that you said, let me see if you follow prior to you, this committee might be able to help you with some of those things. Or may not, I don't know. But let's have a conversation. Are the regular communications? Student representatives report.
Thank you. So as we're kind of entering our low time for the year, you'll notice we don't have as much upcoming information, a little bit, but some of it's pretty far out. But we'll start with our past information. We had our Giving Turkey. It took place in November. It was used to collect donations for the school's food pantry, which was a little different than it had been in the past. In the past, we used it to collect just a bunch of donations. So you picked a feather off a little turkey, and you bought whatever was on there, ranged from games to toys to baby clothes. But this year, we decided the school's food pantry was in need of replenish. So we used that as our collection. We had students drop off specific items in a teacher's bag. And at the end of the month, the teacher with the most items donated had to wear a turkey costume on Wednesday, November 22nd. And the last time we had our meeting, we were discussing that. And thanks to donations from you guys, our winner loser was Mr. DiOrio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that.
It actually-
You were so open, happy to help.
It actually was very close. I think it came down to like, he won by like four or five cans. But I attached a couple pictures at the end for you guys to see.
Looking good.
We had our Christmas in North Brookfield, as we were just talking about. It mostly got explained, pretty much everything I have here was already said. But it's just a really nice event. I've loved getting to participate in it for the last, was it six years now? And it's just, it's amazing seeing the children so happy. It is definitely an event that is very much looked forward to every year by the community, which is awesome for us. We love helping Tabby. And as much as he said he's afraid we'll get to a point where we say we don't need him anymore, we definitely will continue with his help for as long as he is willing. Our Giving Tree is currently taking place this year. We're collecting donations for Abby's house. Our list of items to donate were sent out in an email, and there are also lists posted around the school. And this is continuing until this Friday, so that we can get all our donations together and send them out over break. And then our upcoming information, we have our Excellence Book and Award Submissions. We're currently hard at work on our Excellence Book submission, as well as other award submissions. As of right now, we are planning on submitting a nomination for the Top 10 Project, as well as submitting for the National Council of Excellence, which we did not do last year. And these awards are due on February 1st. This is kind of, for those of you who don't know, our Excellence Book is basically a big, it's a combination of all our events. It showcases what we do well, and all our events throughout the year. And it shows other councils, when we get, when we get our award back, last year we won Gold Council of Excellence, which is very impressive, coming from such a small school. It shows just how much determination and hard work that our student council puts in, as we only have like around 25 members every year. Because there's some councils who have, you know, 100 kids in their councils, and they can't reach this goal, which is very impressive. Our Top 10 Project, we won two years ago. We used our Unity Week. We're looking at a couple different options for that this year. And then our National Council of Excellence is the same as our State Council of Excellence, but it is picked from the entire country instead of just Massachusetts. We have our Unity Week coming up. Our annual Unity Week is in February. This event is used to just kind of enhance our sense of community as a school. We use it to show support for all different types of people, ranging from members of the LGBTQ community to kids with special needs, and even just like everyone individually, showing how everyone is unique and not the same in so many ways. That we haven't decided on a date yet, but that is a little ways out still. We have a couple conferences and trips coming up. I actually missed our Executive Board Retreat. That was a couple weekends ago. That was December 2nd and 3rd. We met early Saturday afternoon at Springfield College East Campus. And we spent the day, this was just an e-board thing, there was six of us who went. And we spent the day participating in team, team building activities, and just building other skills. And it was designed to basically give us the skills to work through the challenges that we're going to face throughout the rest of the year, and build our skills working as a team together. And then we have our Hyannis Conference in March, our Spring Conference is in April. And then, just as always, we have our social medias, which are both @MBSUCO, and our student council meetings are open to the school and the community. So stop by and say hi.
Thank you again for your report. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Very thorough report, because I don't think they're thorough every time. Do you ever sleep, Olivia?
Right, exactly.
Um, maybe?
I want to see what one of our book reports looks like, don't you? Please say what you're saying. I'm no leaper. Good for you, thank you. School committee reports. Any reports? So under here is the regionalization update. And I have to tell you that I don't know what to tell you. On September 9th, the information that was provided to us by our council was sent to the chair of the Regionalization Committee, and we've had no response back since. I've texted, members of the committee have emailed. The last email that was sent was by Sheila on the 21st of November, saying, you know, just checking on where we are on the regionalization agreement, and there's been no response. My text messages to the chair have been, if we do not have a meeting prior to you, this committee's this other meeting, there is not a chance that this vote is going to happen at the town meeting that happens in our town later this year. Because I don't know how we get it on, on the agenda at that point. And I've not, people have received a response. So shame on me, because I really want to reach out to the other members of the committee from North Brookfield, and just have a meeting to have this conversation. But at this point, I honestly don't know that this regionalization is going to move forward. And that's me. That's not a member of the committee talking, that's me as the chairman of this committee saying, I don't know that it's going to move forward. I need to have a conversation with Sheila and Michelle, and we need to have a formal discussion about it. But I don't know that we're going forward, that we cannot since September, get a response back from the chair. I just don't know. It appears to me that there is no longer any interest to moving forward. That's just my opinion. Again, not as a member of the committee, just my opinion as a member of this committee who sits on that committee. So I hope I'm wrong, for a lot of reasons, because I think there are some benefits to the whole thing. But I think at some point, North Brookfield has to know what its plan is for moving forward, and make plans based on that. And this void of knowledge at this point is not really helpful. So that's the regionalization update I have. If there are any questions that I can answer, I'll be happy to do so. But I've not heard from anybody since September 9th. Financial report.
So I've attached the monthly statements, and also our sign warrants under review.
If there are any questions? The only question I have is, I know that there have been some donations made to the school, and I've not seen those come through for our rule. So if we can get those in the next budget, in the next, I'm sorry, not next budget, in the next committee package, that would be good. Superintendent's report.
All right. So my report is very brief this month, but I want to highlight a few things. We did-
Mr. Canada appreciates that.
What's that?
Mr. Canada appreciates it.
I know he does, and that's a real- On 12/5, we had our kickoff onboarding call with our new, our student, a new student information system, Alma. So we are transitioning from school brands to Alma for the 24, 25 school year. So what this means is between now and June, Mr. Hackett's gonna be doing a lot of work, kind of migrating all our student data, staff data, over to this new system, and then the company will provide training for our staff. So that's come July, this cycle we have running, and we'll be able to have everybody, our families, our students, our staff up and running with the SIS. On December 7th, members of the North Brookfield leadership team, including our adjustment and school counselors, met with a team from Haywood Hospital, our Gardner. About 10 years ago, Haywood Hospital started a Painful Care Initiative. And what this is, it's a collaboration between school districts and local police departments. To give you kind of some sense of who's using it, Gardner, Ash West, Quawler, who's one of our neighbors, have adopted this model. What happens is, if a student is coming into school from a home that there was some sort of incident, and the details are not necessarily important, but if the teachers and the school staff need to know to support this student, there is an email that is sent to the school, and the school sends that information to the teachers of that student. So it's confidential, but it just gives teachers an alert notification that this student's coming in with some potential trauma, and how do we support this student. So I'm working with Chief Smith to get this up and running, but I think this is a great initiative for the school district. Unfortunately, like many schools, we have a lot of students who come in with some concerning issues, and we want to support that, those students the best way we can. And last but not least from my report, as Mr. Ryall mentioned, I do want to mention some generous donors from our recent, or, when I say recent, it was earlier this fall, Haywood Theater Trip that our middle school students attend. I want to thank Shelley LeCare, Mr. Mrs. Ryall, Mr. Bills, and Mrs. Hanson for the generous donations towards the tuitions of our students for attendance production. So thank you to all those families, and those community members for making those generous donations.
Any questions? So I missed something during my, during the school committee board, and that was, this committee was very nice, and they did a big donation to hopefully make sure that our high school principal wore a turkey suit. I know that was mentioned by the student council, everyone did. But on behalf of this committee, I was there, did some shopping, and we came back with a couple of large bags of, from the recycling bag, or not recycling bags, but those bags that you use when you go to Big Y. Not the ones you use when you go to Hanford's, because they give you bags, but the ones that you use when you go to Big Y. We had a couple of those full, of some stuff. And the look on John's face was priceless when I walked in the door. I thought you were kidding. I can't, I wouldn't-
It was insane. He had one box of mac and cheese in there before he goes walking. And then he went up to like 50 items.
Yeah. So the bottom line was, if he was not gonna win, then call me, because I was gonna come for him. I actually said I thought he should have to wear that at the school committee meeting.
I still have it in my office.
That went nowhere as a chair of committee anyway. So, all right, moving on. If there's no questions for the superintendent, let's move on to the administrative reports. Who's up?
John.
Marco, okay. All right. Well, at the high school, we're excited to announce, we hired Dr. Ryan Valhemmy as our new high school math and science teacher. Ryan comes to us, he was an adjunct professor at the University of Florida, where he taught geological science. He has a PhD in philosophy and an undergrad in science, and he's looking forward to sharing his passion for science and math with our students. I'd like to tell you, when we met with him, Mr. McCormick met with him, his excitement and passion just shined through, and so we're really excited to have him onboard with our staff. Currently, our staff is finalizing our portrait for graduate description, which will post throughout our school, and it'll be promoted in every classroom. Our portrait for graduate focuses on five key areas of student success: resilient and flexible learners, innovative, critical thinkers, communicators and collaborators, character, and global citizens. These are things that we'll focus on in our classrooms, as we feel will best prepare our kids for our future after they leave our school, whether it's a career or college. I'd like to say congratulations and a special thanks to two of our students, Anthony Blanco and Alexis Coliat. They were both chosen to be ambassadors for the Project 351 Playbook Initiative, sponsored by the Boston Celtics. Now, basically, the Boston Celtics believed in the vision of Project 351 from the start, a champion for diverse ambassador leaders and their mission to lead positive social change. Over the last decade, Boston Celtics players and alumni have joined ambassadors in service, offering essential lessons in leadership and community building. North Brookfield High School was one of 28 schools, and this is really impressive, there was over 100 schools that applied to be part of this program. They chose 28, and our school was one of the 28 chosen to be part of this initiative. So we're really excited about that. On December 2nd, Alexis, Anthony, and our music teacher, Mr. Bills, along with myself, spent the day at the Celtics Training Center, attending leadership seminars, and gaining valuable information to use with our middle school students. We just met with this team, and Anthony and Alexis are gonna be presenting to our middle school students. They're gonna do one presentation in January, and then another one in February. So we're excited about that. In case you didn't know, our boys and girls basketball team is underway, and we won our first game last Wednesday. The boys won 64-34, and our girls won 33-12. Tomorrow, I think Mr. McCormick already mentioned this, but we hope everyone will join us at 6:00 PM, as we honor all the people who generously donated to the Raise the Bleachers Fund. And we'd like to thank them for their support, because we were, if you haven't had a chance to see, we have brand new bleachers down in our downstairs in the basketball gym. Our next Student of the Month award ceremony is January 16th at 8:00 AM. Once again, we'll notify the families of the award winners so they can join us. And I'd also like to give a special invitation to members of the school committee. We'd love to see you there, if you're available to come and join us for that.
John, your report's the summer 9th.
I know, I'm sorry. And I have to apologize, I had the wrong date on your report, so that is a misprint on there. Yeah, thank you.
So this already happened?
It is gonna be January 16th.
Oh, January 16th, sorry, yes. Okay, sorry. I was focused on the number of the month. Sorry, go ahead, John.
And we are also asking people to please join us for junior, senior band performance on Wednesday, December 20th, during the school day at 9:30 AM. And then Miss Priestley is also invited to come up. They're gonna perform at the elementary school at 1:00 on December 20th. So we hope that you could come and watch them. They've been practicing hard, they sound fantastic. Our school council meeting meets once a month, right before the school committee meetings. And so I apologize, that's why I was late. But again, I'd like to say, if anyone is interested in joining and being part of our school committee, please let me know. We're always, we're always happy to welcome new members. Congratulations to our seniors of the week, Kaylee Peterson and Jake Standrowich. Jake plans to attend college and enter the medical field, and Kaylee will attend college and plans to work with children in the future. And I just want to say on that note, and I do apologize, I didn't put this in there, but I have to bring this up. Currently, we have 12. All of our seniors have been accepted into at least one college. Many have been accepted into multiple colleges. So we're very excited about that. And you can see, we started hanging some pennants up when you walk into the building, but Olivia's one of those students. And so we're really excited about what our students accomplish. I think Olivia touched on this, but man, if you didn't know, we got some great kids here at North Brookfield High School. And we are so proud of our kids, I can't say enough good things about them. So I just want to, again, shout out to our kids for the great job they're doing. And one more thing, and I do apologize, I failed to put this on your report, but I do want to mention, January 23rd, we are gonna do a family information night at the elementary school at 6:00 PM, and I'm gonna be sending out more information- at the elementary school at six PM, and I'm going to be sending out more information. Mr. McCormick has sent out some information as well. But we feel it's important for us to get in front of the elementary parents and let them know, I don't think our parents know about the great things that happen here at the high school. And so Miss Priestley has invited us to come up, and we're going to be down at the elementary school to meet with the parents. The presentation will be done mostly by the students, because I think parents need to hear from our amazing students more than they do me, and so that's January twenty-third.
You answered my question. I was going to ask a question, but you answered it. I was going to ask if you were going to have students there as well, but-
Oh, yes, you'll be there.
Okay.
Pencil my day in.
How many seniors are there?
Thirty-three. So almost half right now, and there's still a couple, many more are actually waiting to hear back from colleges.
According to my packet, this is the year that- I'm sorry, are there any questions? Are there any questions? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So our math and literacy leadership committees are each working hard on different focus areas. Our math team is doing some lesson studies, which we were able to kind of see in practice here at the high school, and we took that, thank you to Mr. Giorio for sharing that process with us. Now that we're living our new math curriculum, it's important for the teachers to be able to see each other, teach it, and reflect on best practices and different ways of moving through the curriculum, so it's been an awesome process so far. The literacy leadership committee continues to explore the science of reading and what that means for literacy instruction, especially at the foundational levels. So we're doing a lot of learning in our committee, and then bringing that back to what we're currently using for our tools, and then looking at ways that we can either change or supplement as needed. We hired an ABA, Jamie Manners, she's been fantastic. We are excited for our new nurse to start, Lisa Lashapell, she'll be starting later this week, and Nurse Jessica has been filling in as our subnurse, she's new to our district as well, she's been fantastic as well, so very excited for those new folks. We talked about Cobo for Cops, which was an awesome event. I'll skip over that, because we talked about that. Spirit Week at the elementary school. Champions, so just a little update, Mr. McCormick and I met with the Champions area, the regional director, and our site director, I think it was the last week that we before, and they provided us with some updates on enrollment, so the enrollment is doing great. We've got thirty-nine total enrollments, that's for both morning and after-school. We're really excited that the Champions program is offering after-school care for our half-days and for our school vacation weeks, which their enrollments are coming in for those as well. That was a benefit that we saw at this program, and we're seeing that benefit pay off now. And the last piece was just thank you to the fire department for coming in on Fridays and presenting to our students about fire safety and emergency prevention. They talk about things, you know, about having a safe space spot out somewhere on your property if there was ever a fire, if you were in need. They talk about walking on the ice, so with winter coming, and really educating students about that, and the dangers of going out on ice. So it's just been awesome to have them back in the schools, and they've done this in years past, so thank you to Darren Anderson for working with us and making that happen. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, moving on. You're up, Mrs. Mapp.
Okay, hi. So the third department-wide special education staff meeting was held today. I have to say that I did write this before the meeting, so we did not discuss the psychoeducational assessment results because of some staff absences that we knew about, and we really wanted as much of the staff there as possible, because this is really critical work, so that got tables for a month. We did discuss progress reports, and I don't want to sound serious, but there are some very interesting quirks to the way School Brains prints the progress reports, and so we have decided that we will not be going in and correcting some spacing at the beginning of sentences, because School Brains will just put it back to where it was before, so that when parents get them, we will also send out with the next progress reports a little note, saying why there may be strange indentations in sentences. Also, one of the things that I've noticed as I've gone through and looked at procedures and processes, is that there's continued to be some confusion about the dates on the IEP notification letters, and what should be checked in the checkboxes, and what should be listed in the inclusion line. We talked about that, and I think everybody's ready and set to go with all of that. The actual writing of notification letters is excellent, it answers all the questions, so just little tweaks like that. So on to the next. The elementary school staff and I have identified the need for redrafting of the post preschool and kindergarten screening parent letters. Principal Priestley and I will work with preschool and kindergarten staff to create a more comprehensive document. And we have begun using a new form, which is actually used throughout the common home, but had not been used here, and it's called the declination of service forms. As, I'm not sure everybody on the school committee knows, an IEP is a contract between the school district and a parent. There are times when a parent no longer chooses to have a service delivered to their child, and they will not be notifying the district in writing by completing that declination form, that they no longer wish to have their child access that service. That's it. Questions?
Is there any movement on CPAC?
Not quite yet, no, that's one thing for coming up.
So that's a thing that we're required to do, isn't it? That's something that we're required to do?
We are required to do it, but there's also an understanding on the part of DESI, is that if during the year, and they're not very about when, there is effort to bring a CPAC together, that they do understand that there are actually waivers, but they're quite complex, so that we will continue to work on that.
So, and I'm not, I am not a special ed person at all, so please forgive me, I'm not, I don't know, I mean, I don't, but what are the efforts that we put forward to get that to happen, since I know, and the only reason I ask that question is because I know for lots of parents who have children in that grouping, that that's a very important grouping for them, right? And I don't know, I don't know the number here in Northbrook Field, I probably should, but I don't know the number of students that we have in that group, but maybe, and again, maybe today's not the day, but maybe next week, in the next month, if we talk about-
Absolutely.
What are the efforts that we've made to get that group established?
Reestablished, yes.
Or reestablished, or whatever the right terminology is. I just think that we owe it to the community to make sure that we're being transparent about what we're doing, to try to make sure we're not obfuscating one of our responsibilities as a district, right? So if one of our responsibilities is to have that, then we should have that, and if we can't have that for a reason, or a multitude of reasons, so let's put it out there in the community, let them know why, that we're not doing that, but by my understanding, we're required to do that, right?
In fact, we are required.
Yeah.
And I will openly admit that it is not going to be this priority on my list up till now, and I will make it a priority for the next month.
Yeah, so let's, next month, let's talk about where we are, and what steps we've taken, and what we, what we, look, if this committee can do anything to help you with that broadcasting out to the community, whatever, handholding, whatever needs to be done, let's do that, but if this is an obligation that we're required to do, then we, whatever that is. Okay. Any other questions?
Just, I think it was last year, or last school year, wasn't there a bit of like old Keith trying to get people to show up?
I can tell you what happened last year, because I was a part of it, if you want to go back there, but that was a different director, so I don't know.
That's often a problem with voluntary groups inside of, inside of the district. I don't know if that would be the same situation here, I don't know that, but-
So it's just a matter of making sure that the community's aware that there's a CPAC available, and if they want to attend, they can attend.
Yeah.
I think that's really-
And so, last year, what we did was the director and me and another parent in town had a couple of meetings that we tried to hold, and it wasn't attended. I can't say well-attended, it wasn't attended, though. There was a lot of resistance among the community of special ed, with children, of parents and children with special ed, there was a lot of resistance, to be honest, because I personally reached out to quite a few families myself, and I couldn't get anyone to come. So, I mean, it's something that we definitely need in this community, it's huge support, you know, people, the learning curve for having a child on an IEP, just honestly, I don't think it ever ends, at least not for me, after twenty years of this, I still feel like I'm learning something every time, so it's really important to be able to have that support.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on the shared report? So we also have a report from Mr. Hackinson on things that are going on in technology. Are there any questions that we can follow through the shared network or whatever?
What's the app being developed?
For-
Is that basically a boiled-down version of the website?
Yes, it is, yeah, and that should be, that should be completely, I'll be sending out to families for the next couple of weeks.
Right.
Yeah. So if you try to access the webpage on your device now, it comes out a little funky, so just fully gate that, so you can access it through on your iPhone or whatever device you have.
I don't remember the last time we've gotten a written update from the facilities director, is there a reason that I haven't?
No, I think it was-
Maybe a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
October?
I think it was October. I would say the next month, I know next month he represents the inventory of the elementary school.
Yeah, I'm not saying that he has to be, I just would like to see-
Yeah, sure.
-a report on a monthly basis from the facilities director, like we get from the other leaders of the school committee, if we could do that, that would be a problem. And I think you're back up?
Back up?
Yep, I think it's you.
Okay.
Any others, any other questions? Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on you. Go ahead.
So last month, the chairman asked if I could get an update on the status of the preschool and the preschool moving forward, so-
So if I could just put that in context for everybody that's listening, we made some changes last year to the preschool program based on requests from the district to modify our school, our program, to accommodate changes in tuition, or not tuition, enrollment. Enrollment, thank you for the right word. And I just would like to know how that played out, so.
I think one of the things that is the most interesting in all my years of dealing with supervising a preschool, and it is the program with the most movement throughout any academic year, because of the level of, the number of referrals that come in, both from early intervention and from parents. So having said that, I'm going to get up because I cannot see. So I just wanted to do a very quick regulation review. Programs for young children, according to DESI, is we have to ensure that there are programs available for eligible students three and four years of age, that those programs are developmentally appropriate, and they are specially designed for children three and four years of age. So there are two types of programs, and this is important this year because there have been some changes. The inclusionary program has no more than five students with disabilities and a maximum class of twenty, with one teacher and one paraprofessional. That is not the industry standard. The industry standard is six or seven students with disabilities and a maximum class size of fifteen students with one teacher and one paraprofessional. That ensures that there is one more peer in the classroom than there is students with disabilities. Now, there's also substantially separate program, and the substantially separate program shall be a program in which there are no more than fifty percent of the children of the, have disability, in which more, I am so sorry, than fifty percent of the children have disabilities, and that class size is limited to nine, with a teacher and a paraprofessional. So the previous rationale for the four-day program continues to be appropriate, and as of this moment, continues to be appropriate going into twenty-four, twenty-five. And we're saying that it allows for a consultation between parents, ABAs, clinicians, parents, and outside providers. Just in this last month, we've had our staff go out to at least two separate facilities to do observations before the evaluations of the children here in this building. It allows for the development of IEPs, scheduling and completion of the arena assessments, where when you evaluate a young child, what you do is you bring your child in, you put them in a play situation that is guided, and staff then look at what the child is doing, and they determine what the developmental level is from the behaviors of the child. Implementation of individual behavior and skill-building programs in conjunction with the district's PCBA. We are seeing an increasing number of students coming in who need that very specialized type of instruction. It allows for data collection, and as I said previously, it allows for the observation of students in their homes or current settings as needed, and preparation of classrooms for morning and afternoon sessions. Any questions, Lopez? So the rationale for continuing the four-day program, this is another area. Last year, we had a total of fifteen evaluations. This year already, we've had five, there are five scheduled for January and February, and looking at the referrals that are coming in, we have another ten already in the works for March through June. So now we're up to twenty. It takes one hour for an evaluation preparation meeting, one point five hours for the actual assessment, and then two point five hours to write the assessment. We have begun to write our assessment as a group assessment report, so that once again, it honors the appropriate way to talk about the development of a child that's three and four years of age. So the rationale for continuing half-days for typical peers. Maximize the number of typical students served by the program by maximizing the number of slots available, providing the necessary time for staff lunches, teacher prep, and preparation of the classroom for the next session. And beginning this year, there is one group in the AM and one group in the PM session that is not open to typical students. These are substantially separate programs, and they are designed to meet the needs of those high-need students who need behavioral, discrete behavioral programming, who have a high level of related services, and by putting these students in these separate sessions at different times of the day, we're also increasing their ability to generalize their skills later on. we're also increasing their ability to generalize their skills later on. So if you look, the maximum amount of students per session is in room one in the AM. We have your typical inclusion setting, the same thing with room two. You see that there's something called bridges. That is our program for students who need a high amount of intensive, discrete learning. Then in the afternoon in room one, the children from the AM session in bridges are now staying until 1:30 in the afternoon. This provides them with the opportunity to not only practice and generalize the skills that they learned in the discrete trial setting, but it also allows them the opportunity to have those more extensive related services, speech and language, OT, PT, that they would normally have to get during that bridges time. So it really maximizes the amount of service time that they can have. And then finally, room two continues to have a traditional inclusion setting.
You're saying that's current right now, that's the way it's served right now?
And that's what, I have to be honest, I can only see both the substantially separate programs growing given what we're seeing children who are being referred to come in with needs.
I just want to be sure that that's current over right now.
This, and I'm not saying that we don't have children that need sub-separate, but this wasn't expected, was it, last year? That there would be children in a sub-separate? And I'm asking you, Mrs. Breezeley, just because you were here for that conversation last year, not to override.
No, but again, I understand what you're saying, but we have had a number of IEPs. Again, you know, program development is totally being, is totally dependent on student services. And we have had IEP meetings since the beginning of the year that made it very clear that these students, that there were students that needed this type of service delivery system to meet their IEP goals or objectives. I can't tell you if this was expected last year or not. All I can say is we responded to the needs that are documented in the IEP by developing the programs to meet those needs.
And we developed the bridges program towards the end of last year. So that was something that was already kind of in the works with the expectation that we would be getting more and more students. It wasn't conceptualized to grow to what it's become now at the outset, but it's grown in a really positive way, which I know Anne will talk about in a moment.
And I don't want to jump the gun, but I don't want to forget either. This is the first time that this school has had a sub-separate preschool, right?
Again, it's one half, right, yes, because this is the first time that we have really seen the need for this. This is, as somebody who's just came from a totally different part of the state, this is something that is being addressed by districts all over the state.
And looking towards the future, North Brookfield doesn't have a sub-separate class in the elementary school that we're aware of. Do we have a sub-separate class in the? That's not.
But one, but. A sub-separate classroom.
Well, the behavioral classroom, this just suggests to me that.
Well, let me go on and I think I might answer your question.
Okay.
The extended day program for students with IEPs, the goal of the program is to provide intensive IEP services early on so that we provide them with the foundational skills so they would hopefully not need that setting as they enter kindergarten. I have to say, and this is just colloquial, that one of the things that I'm continually impressed with is when I hear, I sit at IEP meetings and not for kids at this level of need, but for kids with higher, lower levels of need, and I say our related service providers read the differences in scores from when they entered. And when they're having their last reevaluation before they enter kindergarten, and I'm seeing kids that were in serious need of needs now testing out because you get them at that optimum time of development and you can have major impact. So the program design is substantially separate in the morning and there's a term called discrete trial training where they really work on very specific goals in a very specific manner. Then in the afternoon, they come in and the special education teacher, not the BCBA, and one ABA parent and one regular parent continue some work on the discrete trial. But it is also work that is talking, helping the children generalize those skills into a regular classroom. And finally, because they're staying through lunch and through recess, they're being introduced to the school on a, the bigger school environment. And so we started this right after Thanksgiving and we asked the preschool teachers to come up with some of the benefits that they've seen just in the short period of time. There are students who are increasing their social awareness, they're attempting eye contact, that you can now gain attention, their attention. They're blossoming in their use of language. I have to say that more kids are saying hello and goodbye to me when I'm walking in on the classroom than ever before. They're beginning to tolerate demands, follow routine, and follow very simple directions. They're learning to share space in a smaller setting before being introduced to an environment with more students, distraction, and sensory input. And they're being exposed to a new environment as a prerequisite of kindergarten, which helps prepare them for the faster-paced expectations. Questions?
So with the, you said there are 20 slots being projected, well, evaluations projected. Do you see a need for, to carry on these services into kindergarten? And if so, does that follow the same structures for, let's see? The inclusion programs, you have the more than five students for.
For every.
Does that follow the same for class sizes?
Not for class sizes, but an inclusion program has to have 50% plus one general education student to be in an inclusion program. That does not, we are not limited starting in kindergarten except by the class size limits within the district itself. So as far as this type of program being continued, yes. And remember, the evaluations that we're doing now for the preschoolers are for three and at most four-year-olds. So they would have one to two years of preschool before they would be going into kindergarten.
So I'm just asking, are those same ratios carried over like the class sizes?
No.
No?
No, it's only for.
It's only for preschool.
Okay.
Only for preschool.
Are these children all North Brookfield residents? Because I think there was talk last year about opening it up or something, wasn't there? Or no? Are they all North Brookfield residents?
I really can't answer that question. I don't.
Yeah, I would never be able to, there's a number of seats that they all go to outside the district.
Yeah. Wasn't there talk last year? Do you remember?
I think there was a discussion around that, but I think, and I've looked back at my notes too, I think we kept it to, we saw the need for supporting North Brookfield residents first. We have an increasing number, as Ms. Knapp talked about tonight, of students who need these extra services, so we were very cautious about that.
Right. I think the hope was, was that we develop a program that there would be extra slots.
Yeah.
I think that's what the conversation was.
That could happen down the road, but as the numbers are playing out right now for 24, 25, that may not be an option.
We really, we really have, and I know what you're talking about, that we might be able to offer some tuition there at some point for other kids, but it's really, really way too early in the development of the program to even begin speculation about anything like that. Any other questions? All right, thank you. I don't want to get moved up, so.
Thank you. So this is the only question I have, is how does this program that's currently existing compare to the program that was approved by this school district, by this committee? And I don't necessarily need that answer tonight, but I would like that answered.
I think it's very similar on many levels. I think that what Ms. Knapp talked about today is that we talked about the bridges program last year and we're seeing increasingly more students that need real-time supports, that this additional time in school is allowed. I think, Todd, you had a question about sub-separate classrooms. Currently, we have a rise in the K classroom for all the district. And as students transition from pre-K to kindergarten first all the way up, those classrooms may or may not be, may be functioning based on the students that need those extra supports. So what we've done with this program, and Ms. Breezeley sent it on email last week, outlined this, that we are really looking at the foundational skills of these pre-K students so that once they transition to kindergarten and then first grade, they are as close to on grade level as possible. So this, what we're seeing this year is really what we discussed last year. I think that we've done a really nice job of working with families, and Ms. Knapp has been great working with her staff and received their feedback, but also we've made these slight adjustments based on the needs of our students and what their ideas are saying.
So do we have, are there preschool teachers?
No.
No.
The BCBA, as is quite frequently the model, is the one that is working with, implementing the bridges program to implement the discrete trials. And that is a model that's used throughout the common law. Because that is the area of BCBA's expertise.
And to answer your question, all our preschool students are North Brookfield residents, that's all.
So the one question I would have, and again, we don't think, discuss it right now, but this committee approved the program after it was presented last year and I don't understand why the program, when it was modified, wasn't brought back to the community for its approval. I understand that you wanted to modify it and did so for the benefit of the students, and I don't have a problem with that at all. I just think that we had this whole discussion last year about whether it was the purview of the school committee or it was the purview of the district to make those changes. And the committee has stated its desire to be involved in those conversations. And I'm confused why that conversation didn't come back to this committee before those changes were made. I have no issue with the changes that were made. I just think that we should probably have them brought up to.
But if I recall, we voted on dividing it into two half-day classes.
It's not a half-day class anymore. It's a half-day that extends into the next, into the next half of day, which.
There are three classes, they're saying.
Which, which I agree, we agreed that it would be two half, two half-day sessions that were Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, whatever kind of thing, right? And this is not what's happening. There's a bridge class that extends past that half-day. And again, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying that this committee should have had knowledge of and had been able to support that change prior to the change being made. Again, for, this is again, one more opportunity or one more experience where parents in this community know things that are happening in the school community that the school committee is not made aware of, has had a chance to voice their opinion of, and we are the representatives of those people in this community. And we just didn't have the chance to do that. Again, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm saying that we should be brought into the conversation prior to those changes being made. And I appreciate it if we could do that going forward. Are there any other questions regarding this, Matt? Moving on to old business, there's North Brookfield Public Schools strategic plan.
So this was presented to the committee last month. I put it in the pack again this month for your conclusion. This was, this along with my goals from the district for my role here as superintendent, lead to the committee approval, so that's why they were brought back.
Are there questions on the strategic plan? Although I'm not seeing one in the back. Oh, there was, sorry, I apologize. I knew it was there earlier. I'm like, what did I do? Are there questions on the strategic plan? I asked that it be held to this meeting because the full committee wasn't there. If there aren't any questions, will entertain a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented?
I move to approve the strategic plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So appropriately, now is the time for questions, but neither here nor there. No questions? All those in favor? And superintendent's evaluation is next. So we have, I believe, five goals, if I'm not mistaken. There are five goals that the superintendent has laid out for the current school year. I know we're halfway through, but is there a motion to accept the goals as presented by the superintendent?
I move to accept the goals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on superintendent's goals?
He's already got some of them checked out.
So the only question I would have is at some point, you and I had talked about, and I thought it was at a meeting, with regard to administrative policies to ensure that we're developing policies to make sure that we address some of the issues that we've had over the last couple of years. I didn't see that.
No, that's, I think what I can do is I can add an additional goal around that for the next meeting. These are the original goals that I presented back in September, so I can keep those as it is for now. If you'd like an additional goal around set financial policies, I can develop that.
Again, I think the issue is making sure that we're following administrative policies that keep the district out of issues. I think that's, that's mine. I don't speak for the committee, so I'm just saying that's mine. If the committee has anything that they, I mean, you have a set of goals in front of us. So there's a motion on the floor and a second to accept them as they are. That was my one discussion point. We could either approve the motion as it is there or we can make an amendment, hopefully a friendly amendment, that says we'll add one more to talk about administrative response.
I feel very strongly that we need that additional goal because it's proven that we need to.
I can't do anything without a motion, so I need a motion to add a friendly amendment to add a goal of administrative oversight, I guess.
I move to have a friendly amendment to the evaluation goals for administrative oversight.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's a friendly amendment made. You're the one who made the motion. Are you willing to accept that friendly amendment?
So we're going to, the amendment is just saying that there will be another goal forthcoming. In the meantime, we're going to approve these by people sitting on these.
That's my motion. That's my intention at this point.
Then I, then I, I will accept that amendment. That's a reasonable way to get these goals underway.
Right, seriously. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on a friendly amendment. That's the vote. That's in front of you. Is there any other discussion in front of the friendly amendment? All those in favor? Opposed, okay. So now there is a motion on the floor to accept the five goals as currently presented with the understanding that there's a friendly amendment, there will be a sixth goal presented at the next school committee meeting around administrative due diligence or whatever. You'll put the words to it. So is there any question and discussion on the five goals that's been presented by the superintendent? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, there you go. I believe that is all of the old business. Is there any new business?
None, is that?
No new business. Is there any, I'm sorry, I miss policy. There's no policy? Okay, executive session. Do we have the minutes prepared for executive session from the previous executive session meetings? Are we fed? executive session meetings that we've had?
Yeah.
I just, were they sent to the committee, 'cause it doesn't...
Um, they weren't added to these packs.
Okay, so there's no executive session, you will, um, have those minutes for the next, okay. So no executive session, is there anything before, any motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Oh, happy New Year, happy Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, Happy Clausus. Happy Anika, all that.